And we are the Zoning Board of Adjustments for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. The primary responsibility of the Board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code, and to hear and act upon requests for variances, special use permits, non-conforming use determinations, and preliminary development plans under the Land Development Code. Today, we have a variance. A variance is a relaxation of the requirements of the zoning code in a particular case where, because of unusual circumstances, a literal enforcement of our zoning code would result in undue or unnecessary hardship. The zoning code permits us to authorize variances only for the height, size of structure, size of yards, and open spaces. If we grant a variance, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property which must be satisfied if the variance is to remain valid. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a variance are listed in Section 45-833 of the Land Development Code. I'm skipping the special use permit because we do not have a request. Okay, procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the Board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the Board. This motion will be voted on by Board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this Board can be appealed to the Circuit Court. However, any appeal must be filed within 30 days after the Board of Adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Okay, before the first case is heard, all of those wishing to speak today need to be sworn in. So will the notary administer the oath? Okay, before we hear the first case, I would like to ask if anybody has any concerns about me changing the order of the agenda and having the election of officers after the case is heard. Any objections?
No objections here.
Okay, then we will proceed with the first case, and that is variance 21-00.
Five.
A five, okay. It's not on the agenda. It doesn't have five, yeah. Okay. Okay. You ready?
Good afternoon, Board members. As you indicated, we are hearing residential variance case number 21-005. Background information: The applicant's name and address has been redacted under Florida Statute 119-071. The parcel size in question is .19 acres. The zoning is residential R1A. Future land use is rural residential. The request is to place an accessory structure on a vacant lot across the street from the primary residence as allowed by Land Development Code, Section 45-104B. Background information: The subject property is located within the San Mateo Estates, Unit 1 Recorded Subdivision. It's dated March 4, 1957, and was administratively vested March 16, 1999. The applicant acquired the property in 2017, a few months after purchasing the primary residence with intentions of placing an accessory structure across the street from their home. The property's owner's neighbor informed them of the variance requirement for the accessory structure as they had to be approved for one in 2020 under variance 20-007. According to the property owner's variance application, they intend on placing a 40-by-40 metal garage on the property with a 41-by-41-foot concrete slab to support the building. The impervious surface ratio for the proposed development equals 20.3 percent. The ISR for this zoning district is 35 percent. Again, the zoning district is residential 1A, R1A. Future land use is rural residential. The FEMA flood zone is flood zone X. Variance criteria: Special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, or the proposed development design utilizes innovative planning and design which will result in better development and will be an asset to the community. Staff analysis: The property comprises .19 acre. Platted lot is approximately 76.34 foot of frontage, 115 foot on the right side of the property, 63.2 foot on the rear, and 115 foot on the left side. The applicant resides directly across from the lot in question. LDC Section 45-104B reads as follows: "In order to place an accessory structure on a lot or parcel separated by a public or private street from the principal use or structure, the property owner must obtain a variance from the Zoning Board of Adjustments following the requirements provided in Article 9 Division 4 of this code. The lot on which the main use structure is located is developed with a single-family home and would exceed the maximum allowable impervious surface for the zoning district if the accessory structure were to be placed on that lot." Number two, the special conditions and circumstances described in paragraph A above do not result from a failure on the applicant's part to follow applicable county, state, and federal land use regulations and building codes. The analysis there is the subdivision was plotted in 1957. The configuration of the applicant's land is not a result from their failure to comply with applicable county regulations. Variance criteria three, granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this code to other lands, buildings, or structures in the same zoning district. The analysis: The requested accessory structure is permitted in the applicant zoning district; however, the pre-existing property sizes prevent the applicant from placing the proposed structure on the same lot as their primary residence. A survey submitted by the applicant depicts the subject lot directly across the street from the applicant's residence, and a similar case was recently approved in the same neighborhood. Any citizen in Putnam County has the ability to make a similar request to be reviewed by staff and decided upon by the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Criteria four, literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the terms of this code and would place unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant. The applicant's lot containing the primary residence is too small to build an accessory structure of the size proposed by the applicant because the house and driveway encompass a majority of their permitted impervious surface area. The waterfront setback does not permit placement of structures within 25 foot from the mean high-water line of the St. John's River. Any citizen would be able to apply for the same request if the citizen were to own a separate lot from the principal lot by a roadway. Therefore, literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance, which would require that structure to be placed on the same site, would deprive the applicant of an avenue to request permission for the intended action allowed to other citizens within the same zoning district. Criteria five, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make it possible -- make possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure. The proposed accessory structure is permitted in the applicant zoning district and will conform to the principal building setbacks of the R1A zoning district. The structure is proposed to have windows and a gabled roof, which increases the compatibility of the structure with the residential character and aesthetics of the neighborhood. Staff has proposed a number of conditions similar to those imposed on the approval of case number V20-007 to mitigate the aesthetic impact of a large metal structure on the surrounding established residential neighborhood. Criteria six, granting the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this ordinance, and such variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare or interest. The requested variance is to allow for the construction of an accessory structure on a parcel separated by a public street from the principal structure. This is a use that is allowed within that zoning district. Strictly speaking, the subject property may be reasonably utilized without granting the present variance; however, the request is stipulated by the Land Development Code as an avenue to allow placement of an accessory structure on a lot separated by a roadway from the lot containing the main use. The requested variance is the minimum that will make such placement possible. Conclusion and recommendation: Staff finds that the requested variance meets the criteria required for issuance of a variance in Land Development Code, Section 45-833, and recommends approval of the requested variance to allow an accessory structure on the lot separated by a street from the principal use, subject to the following conditions. One, all required permits pertaining to the construction of an accessory use shall be obtained prior to the start of construction. Two, the proposed -- excuse me, proposed structure shall substantially comply with the rendering submitted as an exhibit dated October 22, 2021. Three, the exterior of the proposed building shall be compatible with the existing residential character of the neighborhood. Metal siding shall be painted in accordance with the description provided in the narrative submitted as an exhibit dated October 22, 2021. Four, to mitigate the aesthetic impact of the proposed structure to the surrounding neighborhood, prior to final inspection of the structure, the applicant shall install shrubbery a minimum of 18 inches in height planted three foot on center along Riverside Drive right-of-way and along the adjoining property lines within view of the proposed building. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, none. Thank you. Okay, before we proceed, let's do a site visit roll call, please.
Earl Ballenji?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
No.
Is that Osborn?
Yes.
Mary Reitlis?
No.
Peter Smith?
Yes.
Ron West?
Yes.
Okay, before we have the applicant, Gabriel, I just want to, since everything is redacted, let you know that I did speak with the applicant, and he said he felt comfortable coming to speak in front of the Board. So with that in mind, I'm assuming I ask you that if he speaks, everything will be redacted in the minutes, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The name and the address will be redacted. However, the -- this is being filmed, and it's being broadcast right now, so if you would like to refrain from disclosing your name and address, you may do so. We have it on file, so as long as the chairman's all right with that.
I'm okay. I was just interested more in the making sure that there was nothing divulged as far as the applicant is concerned. So if it's going to be televised, he may think again.
I'm good, I'm good. Will it be announcing that?
Okay, then if you'd like to -- I won't say your name. I'll just let you come on up, and you can tell us the information you want to tell us. How's that?
I thank you all for taking time to hear this variance. Me and my wife live on the house across the street. I moved here from Jacksonville in 2017 after retiring from law enforcement. There, we moved down here. I came out of retirement, currently working for Putnam County Sheriff's Office with Sheriff Deluge. We bought the house and the lot simultaneously there with intentions of putting up a building. Initially, in 2017, approached the zoning, and they said that it was hard, if impossible, to do. So then, when my neighbor had the building put up, I researched it, and I'm before you today requesting approval for the building. What I'm intending to do is build a garage storage area across the street. The residence I live on, on the river, is the first house in this subdivision built on the water, and it's a very narrow lot with limited storage, unlike some of the other properties there that have substantial property on it. Currently, I'm keeping a boat trailer and others, you know, my son's Jeep and stuff in the field across the street. What I'd like to do is be able to, because I want my neighborhood to look nice, I want to be able to conceal all this within the structure and use it for storage. My intent is to build it and make it -- it's not going to be a high-sided building that looks like a commercial-grade building. My intent is to have the building blend in with the neighborhood. I'm going to be purchasing the building with colored panels and colored roof, and, you know, I'd like to put shrubbery up. It's going to have two bays, garage door bays, and a walk-in door facing the street at the street there. My -- I don't want to live in a neighborhood where someone's going to have a big old gaudy building, and I don't want to subject my neighbors to that either. It's not my intention for this variance to do that. It's just to get the extra storage and to keep storage from across the street.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have to ask these questions just to make sure that everything is up in kosher. Is that anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward, and I will ask the question, there's no one else in the audience but anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? No one is coming forward at this time. So at this time, we will close the meeting to the public and open it up for Board discussion and motion.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve variance 21-005 as it meets the criteria for variance required by Section 45-833 of the Putnam County Land Development Code with the four conditions recommended by staff, and authorize the chairman to sign the final order.
I'll second. We have a motion and second. Did Mr. Ballenji beat Mary?
I believe so.
Okay, so.
It doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't make any difference. We have a second. Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve variance. Let me make sure I get this one right.
I'm voting.
21-005. Okay, no further discussion? All of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four. Right hand.
Wrong.
Okay, motion carries six-zero. Just one other reminder, there is a 30-day appeal process, but, you know, since there's no one here, you never know what's going to happen. But good luck with your endeavor, and thank you.
I think we're through.
You're quite welcome. Okay, I -- last year, when we did the election of officers, our attorney conducted the process. So how we're going to do it this year, if it's on the agenda, or do we wait?
That is a very good question. Let me -- you'll give me just a moment. I'll run out there and see if he's just not tied up with somebody in the office.
Okay, we will take a brief recess and.
Okay.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can, we'll just go check him, and we'll finish up with the minutes then. All right, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes for, I think it was November? November 17, 2021? Do you have any corrections, or anybody?
Did you make the motion?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the November 17, 2021 minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Okay, well, I guess we'll take a brief recess until Gabriel comes back.
I also make a question for February.
It was last year.